Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. This is April 17th, 2018. We have all seven Planning Commissioners in attendance for a full quorum. We hope you feel welcome this evening with all the proceedings. The first item of business tonight, we're going to have a pledge of allegiance led by Cub Scout Morgan Allen, if he could please come up to the podium.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Morgan. The first item on our official agenda this evening is the consent calendar approval of minutes from April 3rd, 2018. Commissioner Quinney?
I move to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Green?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Quinney and a second by Commissioner Green. Is there any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Due to some business concerns, we are going to move items number four and five to the beginning of our meeting this evening and have Peterson Commons at Stone Creek, 8142 South, 4800 West, future land use map amendment for 5.2 acres from professional office to low-density residential in a PC zone, as well as item number five, Stone Creek Master Plan, Stone Hollow Area E, 8142 South, 4800 West, amended preliminary development plan in a PC zone presented together. Then we'll have the staff presentation together and then we'll amalgamate both public comment sections together, but then we will deliberate the items separately as a planning commission. Is Peterson Development LLC, Justin Peterson, present this evening? Or his representative? Please feel welcome to come forward and state your name for the public record and please present items four and five. Thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight. I am Kaylin Nichols, 225 South, 200 East, Salt Lake City, and I'm representing Justin tonight in Peterson Development. We're presenting you tonight an amendment to the general land use map from professional office to low-density, single-family residential. The parcel we're looking at is part of the Stone Creek Master Plan, and the ordinance for that was amended and approved in 2008. The parcel, particular parcel we're looking at, is 5.2 acres. It's on New Bingham Highway and 4800 West. We have looked at developing this as office for the past 10-plus years with very little movement. We currently have the Jordan Credit Union that purchased on the corner and across the street's a Vets Office, and that took 10-plus years to get those two lots in there. So, we are looking at revising it, amending it to residential. Within the Stone Creek Master Plan, there was a condition in there for it to be amended to residential in case this was the case, if office did not pencil out. So, in the ordinance, it spells out a certain density so that we have arranged to work within already. The first step it calls out is just amending it from office to residential. So, that's what we're asking. The second item, item five, I believe, is just updating the Stone Creek Master Plan to match our amendment for tonight, changing it from a professional office graphic to a single-family lot graphic. Any questions?
Great, thank you, Ms. Nichols. Are there any questions this evening for the applicant? No, we'll reserve some time for you if there's anything that's brought up in the public comment section.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And for the city, we have Mr. McCandless with these two items.
Thank you. Looks like we're having some difficulties here. So, we're just gonna have to go off the old way, off the staff reports. So, again, this is for a future land use map amendment and then also a request to amend the preliminary development plan, which was adopted as part of ordinance 08019. One of the things that the applicant mentioned is that one of the things is in this Stone Hollow development plan, there was an option in that development plan that said that if office didn't work out, you could develop part of this, or you could develop this as residential. And then it listed a range of density in there. This drops right in the middle of that density range. So, again, the request is for a 16-lot subdivision and just to change or amend the general plan to future land use map to accommodate those that uses. Also, there would just be a .82-acre parcel that will remain, zone, planned community, and then it will also be left designated on the future land use map as professional office. So, we'd recommend approval, just subject to those conditions that are listed in on page two of the staff report for the development plan.
Thank you, Mr. McCandless. Any questions? Commissioner Green?
Just a quick one. So, the amendment is to make it low-density, and the density is, what, 3-point-something an acre? Is that what it is? And that meets the low-density requirement?
Correct, it does.
Or is this? Okay.
It does.
Thank you. Commissioner Luthy?
Thank you. I'm looking at the map on here, and I'm a little confused because it looks like a lot of these lots are much smaller than that. There are several that are .18 acres. That still is within low-density category? That seems wrong to me.
Well, what we're looking at is the overall density. Keep in mind, this is a planned community, a planned community zone, so the Planning Commission has the flexibility, but the overall development meets that density range. It's, like I said, it's right in the middle. Even if there are some larger and smaller lots, what we're looking at is the overall density.
Sure, but it looks like almost half are of the smaller variety.
There's, I think there's only a couple that are 8,000 feet, and then there's one that's the high end of 7,000.
Oh, but there's some that are like .5 and .27 and...
.5 would be a half acre.
Okay. I mean, sorry, .25 and .27. I apologize.
Right, there are a couple that are smaller.
Okay.
So, the average of all properties put together meets the requirement. Any other concerns with that? Any other questions for staff? Well, these two items were noticed as a public hearing, so if anyone would like to speak on items four or five on the agenda tonight, please feel welcome to come forward to the podium and do so at this time. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment section and bring it back to the commission for deliberation leading to a possible motion. Commissioner Green?
Well, I'll start then. Based on the analysis of findings contained in the staff report, or on the next paragraph down, sorry. Based on the information, findings set forth in the staff report and on the evidence and explanations received today, I moved that the Planning Commission forward a favorable recommendation to the city council to amend the West Jordan Future Land Use Map for property located at approximately 8142 South, 4800 West, from professional office to low-density residential as requested by the applicant.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Green and a second by Commissioner Hanson. Any discussion to that motion? Let's please vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Would any commissioner like to take action on item number five? Commissioner England? Could we please mute the microphones? Commissioner Hanson, if you will mind.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, no problem. Commissioner England?
So, agenda number five. Based on the findings set forth in this staff report, I moved that the Planning Commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council to amend the preliminary development plan for Stone Hollow Area E located at approximately 8142 South, 4800 West in the PC zoning district with the conditions listed on page two of the staff report.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion? Commissioner Luthy?
I have a question before we get to that, if that's acceptable.
Please.
I really like the layout on here, and I really like changing it over. I drive by this every single day, and I will attest that it has not been used for anything. And we're still providing an additional area for retail along the main frontage, which is something that comes up quite regularly with us. My concern are these little tiny lots at the very, very, very end. I just am not sure why we don't combine that and make maybe three bigger lots instead of four little lots when everything around here, all of those lots past all of this, are much bigger lots than that. That's my concern.
Thank you. So, what, question for staff. What is the minimum lot size that you can have? Even though we're taking an average of all of the lots put together, could we please clarify what the smallest a lot can be? Thank you. Mr. McCandless?
In the planned community zone, you can go all the way down to 5,000 square foot. It's just negotiated through the approvals. One of the things, just as a note, is that in the engineering report, we did recognize that the street that's going in there has a little bit of an unusual configuration, and there are a couple of things that we need to look at. But that will, that ultimate design has to come back to the Planning Commission for them to look at. So, there may be some options at that point to be able to shift some of those lots around or to move some of those to make those a little bit bigger.
Great, thank you. A reminder, yes, we are seeing the preliminary development plan, not the final plat this evening. Great question. I shared that same concern. Commissioner Green?
Well, I was just gonna mention, this is the drawback to the PC zone, is that you can, do I want to say that? We can play some smoke and mirrors with lot sizes to keep the overall density at something while doing other things. So, it is a drawback, but it is permissible. I agree that we'll be able to see this again with the subdivision, and it may be something that hopefully Peterson will take a look at. I know what they're trying to do is they're gonna try to maximize the profit there, to get as many houses as they can, but yeah. I think I agree with you. Three lots would be better than four there. Divide up some of that lots, or some of that acreage between a couple of the other lots.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you. Are we ready for a second?
We'll entertain a second.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion by, it was Commissioner England, correct? And a second by Commissioner Hanson. Any discussion, any further discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Thank you, Ms. Nichols. And yes, this will be in the record for city council to review our concern, and then we'll see it again when it comes back to us for final. Going back to item number two on the agenda, Brinkerhoff Bluffs Land Use Amendment and Rezone, 7653 South, 1300 West, future land use map amendment for approximately 10.37 acres of property from low-density residential to medium-density residential and rezone from RR5D Rural Residential Half-Acre Minimum Lots Zone to PRDMSHO Planned Residential Development Medium Density Senior Housing Overlay Zone. Cannon and Company, Gary Cannon is the applicant. Is he here this evening or his representative? Please feel welcome to come forward and present your application. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Boyd Brown. I'm not Gary Cannon. I'm working with Gary on this, and he's out of town, so I'm glad to be here. Yeah, we've applied for a land use change. This property has been owned by the Brinkerhoff family. I think we've got third-generation Brinkerhoffs living on the property now. They've been West Jordan citizens for a long time, and as has Gary. Part of the vision for this, I've known about the property for a long time, and part of the vision for this, I have known about your senior housing overlay and also been studying a lot. I'm a student of real estate. I've been a lifelong real estate professional, 23-plus years in the industry. And one of the things that really struck me, the trends or the needs that I've been studying and see in our market and nationally is the just expansion of needs for senior housing. And obviously, you guys understand the need for that with your senior housing overlay and how critical that is and what a benefit it can be for the community. So, I started looking at this property and realized it was available and talking with the Brinkerhoffs. It just clicked to me, and I was at some training, Urban Land Institute, which is training, and there was a book presented by John Burns Institute, which is called "This Big Shifts Ahead", and his presentation was all about the coming shifts. And so much of the discussion has been about housing for millennials and where are we gonna put all the millennials? What kind of housing types are they gonna be looking for? And what the argument was, that really the question that we need to answer primarily in the housing is where are we gonna put all the seniors? And I've got a presentation, some data to back that up, that I'm happy to go through with you. But in the next 20 years, we're gonna add somewhere in the ballpark of 18 million seniors nationally, people entering in that age frame of 62 to 70 years old, that will be looking for housing options. What we've seen in real estate is they're looking for different options than before. They're not necessarily looking to retire in Florida or Phoenix or in a gated community away from where they live now. They're looking to be integrated into their community. So, if they've grown up and raised their family in West Jordan, they want housing products within West Jordan, close to their family, so they can be actively involved with their family, with their grandkids' lives. And a lot of these seniors are now, we see that the studies are that they're working long or into their 60s, so they also want to have access to employment. Using all that and getting to know this property, some of the limitations of the property with the topography and the easements, it just really seemed to make sense to do something with the senior housing overlay. The other trend that was brought up in the book, and we have some data to back it up in a presentation that we can either go into now or if you want to do it after the staff's presentation, is that we're seeing a trend towards intergenerational housing. So, most of the seniors, as I've been polled, and they don't want to be called seniors, they're much more active, but they want to be in neighborhoods. They don't want to be behind fences and away from everybody. They want to be in neighborhoods where in the walking trails and the gathering spots they can interact with people raising families, new family starts, and younger generation. It helps them feel more vibrant and young, and it really encourages a healthy and stable neighborhood. So, we felt like this was a great property to try to achieve that, and we started working with staff and looking at what zone would be needed. And we did understand that we'd have to apply for and ask for a change to the medium density. It seemed to make sense as a buffer between the apartments. We do have a wastewater treatment facility to our west, and we have some significant impact with the power line corridor by the north border of our property. So, the staff, we've had quite good interaction with staff and working through this. We've also tried to be very open with the neighborhood and getting the community involved in feedback and noticing them. So, that's what we're requesting, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them or wait for the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any questions for the applicant this evening? We'll reserve some time for you if anything comes up that you'd like to address after the public comment section. Thank you. Mr. Page, you have this item for the city?
Yes, thank you, Chair. We did receive a PowerPoint application, excuse me, presentation from the applicant. Unfortunately, we did not have sufficient time to incorporate it into our slides this evening. This is about a 10-acre piece of property comprising two parcels. As the applicant mentioned, it's just off of 13th West, about 6700 South. It's just west of the public facilities or water treatment facility plant and the Jordan River. The general plan future land use committee considered this item in their April 10th meeting and gave a positive unanimous recommendation to the Planning Commission that the general future land use map be amended from low-density residential to medium-density residential. So, this would change from low-density residential, which is generally defined as 1 to 3 dwelling units per acre, to medium-density residential, which is 3.1 to 5 dwelling units per acre. Here's an aerial photograph of the site. And you can see what Gardner Village is just to the southeast, the Jordan River on the east side. And this is 1300 West. So, it includes two parcels. This one, which is about a half an acre, and this other one's about 9-point-something acres. This is a conceptual plan that the applicant's put together. Here's a contour map of the site. So, this is the 9-point-something acres, and this is the .5 acres. Here's some photographs of the site taken to the northwest and the north, northeast. Northeast, kind of a panoramic view. And you can see to the south is where the apartments are being constructed for the transit overlay district. So, the one parcel, the .5 acres, is just inside the transit overlay district. The future master transportation plan calls for a trail to go through this area. I assume it's on the, probably gonna be on the west side of the Jordan River. Here's a conceptual landscape plan submitted by the applicant. You can notice that .34 acres is excluded right through here. But this would be the line between the rezone and the current zoning. Here are some renderings of some proposed architectural standards that the applicant has provided for a single family. And here's an architectural rendering for a senior housing overlay. And some community features that they're proposing would be some nice decorative walls, amenities of improving the current stream running through the property alongside the overhead power line, and maybe have a fenced-in dog park and a walking trail. And here's an idea for lighting. The staff has reviewed the conceptual plan and feels like it has some, quite some promising ideas how it conforms to the general plan. The general plan calls for the low residential, residential to be the primary land use within the city, but it also calls for a variety of housing uses to be involved. We believe that this proposal has some merits in the fact that because of the contours of the property, because of the overhead power lines, because of the existing stream, that this seems to have some promise. And as the applicant's mentioned, that there does seem to be a demand for senior housing. But there's some, staff would request a little bit more detail of exactly, you know, how the landscaping would look, how the parking would look, how the lighting would look, maybe what the relationship is of easement through this private lane to access these senior townhomes. And then a big question we have would be the use of this property or remainder piece that would be technically in the zoning rezone area, but there's nothing necessarily proposed. It's not calculated as part of the 2.31 acres of open space that is being proposed. The overall density, when you take the 10-point acres with the 30 senior housing units and the 19 single-family units, is 4.7 dwelling units per acre. So, that's within the 3.1 and 5 units per dwelling acre that's designated for the medium-density residential. Again, staff recommends that this could be a good product, but we feel like it could be useful for the refinement, and we appreciate the feedback and ideas from the Planning Commission and the public.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Any questions for staff this evening, starting with Commissioner Green?
I've got a couple. Do we know the acreage of the utility assessment? The reason why I ask that particular question is there's a utility easement, and there's a storm water drain easement on there. The storm water drain easement can be calculated in the open space area. The utility easement cannot. It's not allowed as an open space, it's not allowed to be calculated in the open space. So, when we start talking about density and the percentage of open space and those kind of things, I think we have an issue there. That's why I was asking. And I guess the next question is, do we know how much land? Because that north side of the property, I lived in the neighborhood, so I know what it's like because I see it every day when I go out in my neighborhood. That north side's really steep, and I know we've heard that. Do we know how much of that is actually over 30%? Well, that's part of the open space, and the open space... No, that's the whole entire piece.
Let's go to Mr. Page, please.
Those are some good questions, Commissioner Green. We do not know the acreage of the overhead power line. We do have an easement for the stream and also for emergency access. And as far as calculating what the percentage of open space versus the overhead power line, we haven't taken that to account. That's a good question to look at.
Okay. And then, one last question before I... I'm looking at the landscape plan, and the landscape stops before it hits the, before it goes west on that south road. Do we have any idea why that stops with no... You see where I, that as the road comes around and it goes east, no, right there. It's beginning of the other area, but wouldn't we want to have sidewalk and landscape plan consistent along the street while we were building that?
I'm not quite sure where you're referring to it.
I'm talking about the area that borders the .34 acres and the other...
Oh, yes.
Because it looks like the landscape just stops, and the existing house is not gonna have anything along the street. Wouldn't it be more consistent if we were developing that to have a sidewalk and the landscape extended?
It would seem to be more consistent, but the formal application is to exclude this .34 acres and have it stop right here. But it would seem logical to have landscaping through this area too, but I'm not sure why the applicant has proposed this landscaping plan. As far as the contours, our GAS department put together these contours, and they're two-foot intervals. The smaller ones, the major lines are at 10-foot indexes. So, there's some pretty good slope off to the east side.
There's some really good slope right, just to the left of your cursor right now. As you go right, as you go right to the top of the screen, there's a really good slope right in there, where it's really almost solid red.
Yeah. The, one of the questions the general plan or the application asked for is there another place where this use could be better suited for the general plan? And there's relatively few spots in our city that are still designated low-density residential, particularly on the east side. However, I could see how this could be possibly a good use of the land, given the topography, the views, the overhead power line. the views, the overhead power line, the stream, the proximity to the, the transit overlay district, so.
Thank you. Mr. Gardner, did you have anything that you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, and so when this property goes into the subdivision process, if it gets there, a slope analysis will be required on the site because it is on a hillside. And so according to our ordinance, they will have to have a geotech firm do a slope analysis and identify all, all slopes that were now and historically over 30% in grade, and so.
Thank you. Let's go to Commissioner Luthy, and then we'll come back to you, Commissioner Green.
Thank you. So on that same line, if they're putting in these roadways, they're going to have to do the whole right-of-way of these roadways. They, they can't just say, we're going to take out this area that fronts this point three four acres. They have to complete the entire right-of-way of the roadways. So landscaping will be in those roadways all the way around, whether they wanted to do it that way or not, correct? Okay.
Commissioner Green?
The reason why I'm concerned about the slope and, and those kind of things is because right now, if we were to use the density that's proposed, 4.7% density, the only way to get there with the concept design is to have the entire open space park, if you, with no other amenities, and I don't see a swimming pool, and I don't see any other things that qualify for density buy-ups in this project, the only thing that can get us to 4.75 density buy-up is the open space. And if there's 30% slope that doesn't count in the open space, and the utility easement doesn't count in the open space, we could quickly, we could quickly get to a point where they're barely meeting the 15% open space with no buy-ups for density. And so that's why I'm concerned about the, about the slope there and about the, about the utility easement, because I think it directly impacts the, the determination of how much open space and whether or not this even meets the 15% requirement. Does that make sense?
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Luthy?
It sounds like there's still a lot of unknowns. And if we were to rezone this to the medium-density, there's, there's really a highly unlikely that we're ever going to be able to go back to the low-density if this project doesn't pencil out. So is there any way we can get a little bit more of this information from the applicant before we make a ruling, or is that not available at this time?
That's why staff recommends a tabling of making it a recommendation to the city council, because we believe that, that staff, excuse me, the applicant could possibly answer some of these questions in more detail.
Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you, Chair. The one concern I have, and I know we haven't had a public hearing yet, is the fact that you're going to exit onto 1300 West. We've got the apartments, Colosmo's apartments across the street from there. They do have an access onto 1300 West or onto 7800 South. But anybody getting off the freeway is going to get off at 70 South. And when they get to 13th West, they're going to turn south so they can get to their home rather than go to Redwood Road, which is the next road. I just, I really worry about the number of apartments that are going in at Colosmo's and then putting this much traffic also on 1300 West. And I don't know when it's going to be widened, if it's going to be widened. I just think that's putting an awful lot of traffic right onto 1300 West and with the apartments across the street.
Commissioner Luthy?
Has any kind of a traffic study been done at this point, or is that something for the next round?
No traffic analysis has been done at this point.
Could we have that be done, if we tabled it? Could we have that be done before we saw it again?
We'd have to talk to Bill Baranowski and see if this warrants a traffic study, if it's a large enough project.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. And Commissioner Hanson, I, I agree too, not just with traffic, but whenever there's an increase in density, I want to make sure that we look at things really, really closely to ensure that it warrants that and it's the highest and best use for that area. Any other questions for staff before we open this up to the public? Seeing none, we'll open this up for public comment. If you'd like to say anything regarding this item, please feel welcome to do so at this time. If you could please state your name and address for the public record.
Yes, Jalen Thomas, 1348 West, Barton Hollow Drive. We were contacted in January by Mr. Cannon. Surprisingly, he left us a message. He wanted to get the neighborhood's blessing. That was a little shocking. As far as the traffic that we're talking about, when we were dealing with the Colosmo project, the whole argument was that all, pretty much, the majority of the 272 units were going to take tracks. So are they going to take tracks, or are they not going to take tracks? Because the whole argument with the apartments is that it was in the trans-oriented development. We won't have issues with traffic. And now we have a good plan coming before us and a developer who is working with us and listening to our ideas and our concerns about this project. And a lot of it is senior housing, which a lot of seniors are retired, and I don't see where they're going to be putting a lot of traffic any more than the 272. The single-family lots, yeah, they probably have people that are working. But, so we need to decide, is the apartments with the argument before and the reason it was passed with the planning committee and the city council at that time and telling the neighborhood that it would not impact us traffic-wise. We have something that's smaller density, and all of a sudden, we're going to have a problem with traffic. We have had a problem with traffic since 2006. And when I worked downtown, it took me longer to get off the 7200 South and get to my home, which will, is right in one of those entrances. And it would be backed up to Bora Bora. And until it was all interconnected, I was at the mercy of all the cars backed up. So I think we need to figure out, is the apartments going to be a problem, or they're not going to be a problem? Because when it was approved, traffic wasn't going to be a problem. And so, anyway, that's my thing, so thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
My wife had said, my name's Jay Thomas. I live at 1348 West, Barton Hollow Drive. As many of you probably are shocked that I'm even up here in support of this development. But when the developer actually approached us, he was really receptive onto our viewpoints. And he did address a lot of the concerns about the traffic, even the green space, which right now, anybody who lives in that area, we have no green space, period. If you want to take your grandkids or your kids to a park or just an area to play in, there is nothing in that area, nothing at all. So that was one of the positive aspects that would actually bring a lot of things to our, that part of the neighborhood and stuff. I've dealt with a lot of developers, and very few times have they actually approached the citizens and the community first and said, hey, this is what we want to do. This is some of the conceptual drawings. And I've really enjoyed looking at the, the mixed use, especially with the senior housing. Especially, many of us are getting up to that age where that is something we're seriously looking at, is moving into those senior housing, especially as our families have moved out. We're looking at the single levels instead of the multiple levels. And I think it would be really good mixed use. And there is some questions, and I understand that, but I think when you have a real positive experience with a developer that's actually willing to go the extra mile, listen to the citizens, get the city's feedback before some of these other projects and stuff that they don't, they just tell you, you know what, this is what we're going to do, and we don't care. So I'm, I'm speaking in support of it and for those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Spencer Parkinson, 7495 South, 1300 West. I'm here, I'm here representing the local wastewater treatment plant, which is to the west of this property. When Southside was built in the late 70s, early 80s, we had plenty of buffer space around us. And as a gentleman who has taken some complaints, odor complaints for the local yogurt plant, we don't smell much better on certain days. With this property going in there, you know, that's something to consider, with homes being right next to the wastewater treatment plant. As time goes on in West Jordan and the other entities in the south end of the valley grow and expand, we will have to also grow and expand and put in further tanks to, to treat the waste that comes to us. Our other concern is the backing up to the canal, which is between us and the Brinkhoff property in the last 10 years. That canal has breached onto our property at least three times. So this is something that's also a concern for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parkinson. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment section and ask the applicant if he'd like to come back up and address any items that have been addressed so far.
Yeah, great. Thank you, and thank you for the report on this. And I do appreciate the support we've gotten from the public. We've had quite a few good conversations. Some really good things have been brought up tonight for consideration, and we would want to address all of those. To my knowledge, there's nothing on the property that is over a 30% grade. It is a tricky property. There's a lot of challenges presented, and that's why we've tried to be creative in the plan. Certainly, we would accept what the city ordinance is and not, not assume that we could build on anything more than a 30% grade and also not get credit for any open space that was additional to 30% grade. As far as the power corridor easement, I'd have to verify that. I, I, my understanding is that the overhead power corridor easement is treated a little bit different than the underground utility easement in the calculations, but I could be wrong on that. And certainly, as we move forward a site plan, when we have a survey, we would be able to do those calculations, and we wouldn't want to get credit for anything that's against your ordinance. As far as the traffic goes, I agree with, I would just want to echo what I heard in the, in the neighborhood. I mean, we, I really feel like the senior housing provides less car traffic on a daily than what the medium or the low-density, which would be half-acre lots. Typically, there are going to be larger families with three or four cars coming and going to schools and to, and to work. And one of the things, you know, this property is difficult with the neighbors. We've talked about the wastewater treatment, and we've talked about the apartments, we've talked about the transit-oriented development. And 23 years ago in real estate, I've never had anybody call and say, hey, what do you have for me next to a wastewater treatment plant? And no one's called and said, what do you have next to an apartment? So there are some challenges, and we're trying to make the best out of this, and I think this is a really good solution to that. And one of the benefits, in addition to having less traffic on the seniors, we, we got an easement and discussed putting a, a walkway so that you can get over to Gardner Village. It creates a walkable community, which should reduce traffic even further. Furthermore, it also creates a connectivity to the light rail stop, which would be really taking advantage of. This is transit-oriented. Even though we're not as dense as a transit-oriented development, we are providing a community where ideally, there could be trips saved every single day if someone's going to go have a, meet friends at a restaurant at Gardner Village or potentially take that light rail. The other thing, Commissioner Hanson, you brought up the traffic, and 13th can get pretty tough. These guys have lived there for a long time, and they've watched that congestion grow. One of the benefits of our project, if we're successful in doing this, is we will be improving, forced to improve and widening that section of 13th West. So while we can't take on the burden of widening 13th West the whole way, we will be, I think, making progress towards a solution of widening it where it is fronting our property, which is really a pretty big undertaking for this project. And I feel like some of those things, with the power corridor, some of the other challenges we talked about, with this left in the, the large-lot zone, the cost to improve that road and all those things are, I really find it very difficult to imagine that the property would develop anytime soon with that zoning.
Thank you for the additional information. Commissioner Hanson, do you have a question for the applicant?
No, I don't have a, I don't have a question.
Commissioner Green or Luthy? No? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Wait, what, what do we do? Commissioner Quinney? If we could mute the microphone so Commissioner Quinney could please speak, and then we'll get back to you.
All right. Just because we talked a little bit about this downstairs, and it was brought up again about this spillage, there was talk about a buffer or something like that, I just wanted to hear if you had any thoughts or to address that last comment about the, the overflow of the creek.
No, I mean, obviously, we would build it to code. It would be a concern of ours too. I mean, we, we are quite a ways uphill from where that canal is. Where anything that we're proposing on the footprint, we would certainly want to take whatever efforts we could to protect ourselves and homeowners against that. But I haven't known that. And I also know that the odor, we've talked to the neighbors around there, and they really haven't ever had an impact or ever complained about it. And we know that that's something we'll have to disclose to any buyer who understand. I mean, people move in to want to be out in the country and then complain about what it smells like country, so it's not like anyone's hiding that wastewater treatment plant, and it would be full disclosure. And I think they do a great job maintaining the odor. It really, I've never been in, had to buy it while I went up and down there.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, Commissioner Green, you mentioned that you didn't see a swimming pool in the amenities. I mean, you've got one.
No bridge to there.
Oh, okay. Well, we've heard from staff, we've heard from the applicant, we've heard from public, Mrs. Thomas on traffic and tracks, Mr. Thomas on the green space, and Mr. Parkinson on the wastewater treatment plant and canal. Let's see if we have enough information. We, we've talked about perhaps getting a, a traffic study. We don't know if that would necessarily be of the magnitude that would warrant Mr. Baranowski. So let's, let's figure out if we have enough to take action tonight. Commissioner Hanson?
Yes. Mrs. Thomas mentioned the fact that, and it's nice to hear somebody in favor of something rather than usually giving us heartburn over it. But this is giving me a little bit of heartburn. And we talk about senior housing. Now, Mr. Cannon was at our last two meetings where he put senior housing within the city in different areas. Senior housing means somebody 55 or over has to be living there. That's all. I am well over 55. I can move into there, and I could have my two great-granddaughters with me. It's just not for people over 55. So you need to understand that when they talk about senior housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Green?
I was thinking about a song from a movie. Where do I begin? But let me tell you why I believe that this, this should be tabled and should, we should get some more information. First, we've heard that, I, I'm not sure I like the, the layout of the houses, because there's not really a buffer to the, to the, to the east with the sewage treatment plant, but I'd be okay with, with kind of this. I agree with Mr. Page. I think this concept has some promise, but I'm not sure where we're going to end up with that, with the, with where, where we're going with this. And, and let me tell you why. To, to address the utility easement, utility easements cannot be used as open space calculation in a PRD. There's only four or five things that are listed in the PRD's own, and it, utility easement's not one of them. On this particular concept, if you'll notice, all the senior housing's in the middle, but there's no connectivity from the senior housing to the park. And so if you live on the south side of the senior housing, you have to walk all the way around the neighborhood to get to the park. So there's, the, the walkability that we're talking about has failed here, particularly for, if you're talking about seniors that need to walk shortly to get there. So that, that really should be part of the, the concept plan. The next part of this that I have an issue with is that, and, and we really not supposed to deal with what the proposed housing looks like, but it is, it is part of the concept. And PRDs have a concept plan. The townhomes that you have proposed on this particular process don't meet the ordinance. You've got these long skinny things with the, with the garage that sticks out front. By ordinance... By ordinance, the garage has to be even with the porch. And so your houses have to be literally wider because the way they're extended on the front doesn't fit. And when you're talking about putting 15 homes or 15 buildings or 15 buildings on these sites, you can see how the garage sticks out on this one particularly. The garages stick way out. That doesn't meet code. And so when you start talking about putting garages on the side, that means the houses are gonna shift and your density's gonna shift away from the 4.75, may shift from the 4.75. Like I said, I have concerns with the 30%, the easement, those calculations. There's no plan here for any amenities. I will tell you that the senior housing over, let's get into a couple of real technical difficulties. Normally, when we do a senior housing overlay, the senior housing overlay matches the property line. Well, now we're talking about putting senior housing overlay inside a PRD. And so I think before we approve a senior housing overlay in a PRD, we've got to have the specific legal designation of that particular zone to make it work. The other thing that concerns me is we're actually dealing with two different zoning properties because the property's non-contiguous. I've done a little bit of research and the only place that's got any non-contiguous zoning ordinances is New Jersey. And last time I looked, we're not in Hoboken. So the property on the south side that ties into Colosimo, that's a separate zoning district because the senior housing overlay's not stretching over Colosimo's property on the driveway. And I'm not sure we could do that anyway without Colosimo's permission. When you take that, the stuff on the south side, there's no walkability, it's not tied to the rest of the community, so it doesn't meet the standard of the PRD ordinance. Because the PRD ordinance requires walkability and those four units are out on their own little planet and it's not walkable and there's a sound wall there at Colosimo's that, yeah, that, you know, if they want to get to the rest of the community, they gotta climb the fence and that's not gonna work. So we've got the zoning, the SHO zone and the legalities issue there, we got the non-contiguous property issue there. I will also tell you that based on this concept, that if we were even talking the senior housing overlay zone for those 18, those buildings in the center, it doesn't meet senior housing overlay zone requirement because 13, 6, H, 9, B, 1 through 5 have some very specific requirements that must be in a senior housing overlay zone. And after I went back and looked at the SHO zone, I have some concerns about the last SHO zone that we approved because it requires benches, it requires a courtyard, it requires some very specific things in the SHO. And so I think there's a lot of things that we gotta work through on here. And if you look on the staff report, the staff report, you know, you look at the findings and we have may and could, and I agree with the staff, they're may or could, but those aren't positive findings that we can make as a finding of fact to say we can approve this. So for all of those reasons, I think we need to table this until we can get this, until we can get a better concept plan, particularly when it comes to density and roads and those kind of things about, and whether two entrances on 13th West is appropriate, adding, having three entrances on 13th West right next to, you know, you've got Colosimo's and these two. There's a lot of things that need to be thought out of, are thought out before we start talking about approving a basic concept plan and a PRD zone with a density that we don't know if they can even get to the density because they don't have any swimming pools or any of those other things that add for the density buy-up. And even if you do the lights and the upgraded architectural features, that's .3 and we might be close with the park, but I'd rather see all of that before we vote to say, yeah, let's go with a concept that's at 4.7 density that then we're stuck with, then the developer's stuck with trying to do some stuff that stretches the imagination to meet the density buy-up.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Luthy?
Thank you. I really like the idea behind this. I'm usually one of the first to defend keeping low density where low density is, mostly because I feel like we've given up too much of that in West Jordan. But I really, really like the concept behind this. I think that there are some things that have been mentioned tonight that need to probably be addressed before we make this kind of a change. I agree with what was just said as far as, I don't want to make the change to change the zoning in the future land use map and all of that without having those answers in place first. So I agree that we should table it, but I really like the concept behind this.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinney?
Thank you. Yeah, there's a lot of information tonight. At the beginning of this, I wanted to say, I'm not a big fan of tabling these items. The applicant's on their job to get this here and talk to us. But everything Commissioner Green said has made sense to me. However, what's pushing me towards agreeing with tabling this is just quickly glancing back through these notes. Again, I'm finding inconsistencies in this report that I think need to be cleaned up. Specifically, finding A says the proposed amendment conforms to and is consistent with the adopted goals, objectives and policies. And then the finding says the proposed general plan amendment does and does not comply with the city general plan. I don't get how we have this dual application. Finding D says something similar, says the proposed amendment constitutes an overall improvement, blah, blah, blah. The applicant, this is the finding, the application's proposed amendment does show some potential but falls short in demonstrating that this changes an overall improvement. So like I said, well, I'm not a fan of tabling this because I think that we owe it to the applicant. I think that we owe more to the citizens of the city to make sure that we're on board with this 100%. And I think that we should be tabling this until we get some of these answers taken care of.
Thank you. Which I guess it could be more respectful to table it than to deny it.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Green?
I'll just add a couple more things that Commissioner Quinney hit on, and that's in finding C. We have a finding that says the proposed amendment could be compatible with other land uses. We'd have to make a specific finding and I don't think we've heard that tonight. The other one is in criteria one, under the amendment to the zoning map, the finding from the staff is specific, the proposed rezone to PRD medium is not in compliance with current general plan's redesignation of low density. And so just based on that finding alone, I don't think we can...
I'm reading that as it's not in compliance with low density, not that it's in compliance with...
Oh, okay. All right. So...
That's how I read it.
Okay. But I think there's some issues and I think that based on that, I'm going to flip back here and see if I can find it to say, based on the, and since I'm talking, I'll just keep on going. Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations tonight, I move that the planning commission table the recommendation to the city council to rezone the 10.37 acres from RR, and I think it's actually technically RR 20 based on designation of the city zone now, to PRDM with a senior housing overlay district, planned residential development, medium density residential at 7653 South and 7661 South 1300 West.
So stop right there. So Duncan, do we need to table this to a specific date or can it be a date uncertain?
You could do it to a, well, you could do it to a date uncertain, but it's better to do a date certain just so that if people did want to, that are interested, show back up, so. Right. Yeah, yeah. So that would prevent the re-noticing if we did pick a certain date.
Want to say a month from now?
Is a month gonna be long enough for them to address all those issues or will go? I don't think so. I think we're talking at least the second meeting in June. What do you think?
We could suspend rules and ask the applicant, how long would be beneficial?
I think that's beneficial, yeah.
Let's suspend the rules?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion to suspend the rules is our second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Seven to zero. Would you like to come back up, sir, and let us know how long would be long enough for you to be able to address all of these concerns that we've had, but not so long that it sets you back? We want to be respectful to you, we want to do our due diligence and represent the citizens of the community well.
Yeah, we could get that all done in a month. I just, I mean, there's a lot of work that goes into these site plans where it's at the zoning, so some of this has been a little preliminary, but we'll dig in and give you the information you want. And a month is plenty of time.
Great.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, let's do a month.
All right. So the first meeting in, no, the second meeting in May?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So would you like to amend that motion to have a specific date, Commissioner Green?
So I will amend that motion, as I said, adding on that it'll be heard in the second meeting in May, May 15.
Thank you. Commissioner Luthy?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Green.
Could I comment?
Yes, of course.
Perhaps they could take a month to get the additional information to us, but how much time would the staff need to analyze additional information to have ready for you so you can analyze it before the meeting?
Very good. How long would you need? So the first June meeting, would two weeks? Because that would give at least two, if not longer, if the applicant gives it sooner.
That would actually be six weeks because of the fifth week in May.
Mm-hmm. Good point. That'd give an extra week as we skip a Tuesday with the fifth Tuesday.
So I'll modify that to June 5th.
And I'll second.
Thank you. We have a modified addendum, a modified modification to the modified amendment. Well done. And the second is accepted by Commissioner Luthy. Any discussion to that modified motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for good deliberation and discussion. That moves us to item number three on the agenda. Zone 4, New Bingham Highway, 4 MG Reservoir, 6700 West, New Bingham Highway, future land use map amendment for 9.505 acres from light industrial to public facilities and rezone 12.56 acres from A20 agricultural 20 acre lots zone to PF public facilities zone. City of West Jordan, Tim Heyrend is the applicant and Mr. Page will be presenting on behalf of the applicant and the city this evening, correct?
That'll be fine unless some other city staff would like to interject. We view this as pretty much kind of a housekeeping item. The future land use map calls for approximately 1.15 acres of this proposed public facility. It's currently designated as light industrial. So the land use change would go from light industrial to public facilities for the 1.15 acres. And interestingly enough, all of this property around here is currently zoned A20. So the proposal is for 12 acres of what you see right through here, excuse me, to be rezoned to public facilities from agricultural 20. This is to accommodate the expansion of this reservoir to bring on another 4 million gallon reservoir site for culinary water and also for some room for detention basin. Currently, there's a drainage where this park and open lands area is designated, where the drainage is directed to go into this single family neighborhood. Staff would like to reconfigure that drainage to go a little bit farther north and create a detention basin slash park through this area for, you know, use of floodwaters and also for maybe some soccer games. The city is proposing to have some nice landscaping similar to what we see at well number two and well number three with wrought iron fencing in the front and black vinyl fencing, black chain link fencing, I should say, on the back and sides with some improved If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to address those or...
Thank you, Mr. Page. Any questions for staff?
I'll ask. I'm just curious, does the city already own this property or are we purchasing it?
I could answer that question, but I believe I might be not as complete as I could be.
My name is Roger Payne, engineer with the city. Responsibility is over utilities. To answer your question, the city has recently purchased this property from the Jones family and finalized the purchase of maybe 30, 45 days ago, anticipating construction of the water storage facility this summer possibly. And the detention basin that was mentioned is part of the property that was purchased and design hasn't proceeded on that yet, but it's anticipated that they would be designed later this year and for construction probably next year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? All right. We'll open this up to the public. If you'd like to speak on this item, please feel welcome to come forward at this time. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment section and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Or in the absence thereof, a motion. Commissioner Luthy?
Thank you. My only weird thing on this was the park idea. I think this makes complete sense except for, the park's not really attached to that neighborhood. What, and it's on a semi-busy street. What does that really offer, having the park there?
It's more a detention basin than a park.
Okay, so there's not gonna be actual park facilities. People could just use it as open space.
That's just a thought. The primary purpose is a detention basin right now. The thought is that maybe in the future, it could also be used as a park for maybe some soccer games, but that's secondary at this point.
And you'd put in like a parking lot to be able to get there or something? Because it's, I mean, it's, do people really park on New Bingham? Isn't that pretty? Yeah, I'm just kind of confused by that part. That's why I'm asking the question. Yeah.
Great question. So if you remember last year when we were revamping all of the southwest quadrant of the city with, you know, a lot of the industrial and the whole economic development area, we took that opportunity, this, if you can go back a couple slides to show the future land use map. Originally, the park, yeah, there you go, was further to the west and we took the opportunity to kind of join forces with the engineers here at the city to put it at the end of this drainage and use it almost as a buffer to all of the industrial that'll be going in. Parking for any, you know, use of that detention pond for soccer fields or whatever would come off of Wells Park Road, which is on the south. There are no designs, there are no specific plans at this point, but it's meant as a kind of a regional or a larger area detention pond.
Where is that road that you're talking about?
Right where that arrow is. That's Wells Park Road. The future, the transportation master plan calls for that to extend in the future.
Okay.
And so that would definitely be safer than New Bingham Highway.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So that's the division that we talked about last year when we...
That would be the connection to, even to access the park, everybody would, okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or all entertain a motion? Commissioner Quinney?
Yeah, thank you. Based on the information that's been set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today... and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council to amend the general land, future land use map for approximately 1.15 acres from light industrial to public facilities on property located at 6,700 West New Bingham Highway.
Commissioner England?
I second that.
A motion by Commissioner Quinney and a second by Commissioner England. Any discussion in the motion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Thanks for doing business in West Jordan. West Jordan?
Hey, before you go on, I have a question. And it just dawned on me. The staff report for the bluff, the Bringer Hop Bluff set on it, roll call vote required, was that for us or was that for the city council? Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Thanks for double checking. This brings us to item number six on the agenda. BMP LLC property, 7540 South Redwood Road, future land use map amendment for approximately 0.82 acre of property from high-density residential to professional office designation in a PO zone. City of West Jordan again is the applicant, and Mr. Forsyth, you have this this evening?
Thanks, I'm over here.
He's there, it's just, it's just fine.
Yeah, so as you can see on the map here, this is the general area that's going to be affected by this proposed land use change. Now, keep in mind that this is only amending the future land use map. This is not changing the zone. So what this is, is, and I'll change the map here, but as you can see here, there's essentially this two-acre pocket of high-density residential that's kind of been left over after while this area's been zoned for professional office. So when the property to the north was, when the city council was looking at that rezone, they were looking at not only the zoning map, but the future land use map, and noticed that there was kind of this inconsistency with this PU, this area being zoned for professional office, but having a land use designation for high density. And so they had asked staff to essentially take a look at that and see if they could kind of clean that up and make both the land use map and the zone consistent. So this land use map would only affect one property, and this is the Animal Crackers Veterinary Hospital that's just right out in front of West Run Middle School off of Redwood Road. So that property comprises about 0.82 acres. But as you can see here, this land use area, I'll go back here, most of that covers Redwood Road, and so we're just trying to kind of clean that up. So the use of that property is considered legal non-conforming, and with this just being an amendment to the future land use map, this won't affect use or anything like that since the zone is already established. So there's really going to be no effect on the existing tenants whatsoever. So this surrounding area, as you can see here, we've got the middle school just to the west, across Redwood Road is all single-family residential, medium density, then to the north is that professional office. So this would essentially just be an extension of that, as you can kind of see here on the map. So the general plan, in regards to professional office, they encourage them to be located in places that are close to residential areas and major traffic corridors, and we feel that this meets both of those criteria. So we think it's pretty consistent with the general plan. So and then in looking at, from a citywide perspective, the amount of professional office that we have citywide is about 1.78%. So obviously, this would be increasing that, and so that would be, again, encouraged by the general plan. So now going back to the, that high-density residential land use, what it is now, you really don't see that being a practical use for that site. Again, the only property that would affect it would be 0.82 acres, and there's really just no way to put any multifamily housing on that small of a parcel. And so, again, we feel that that's a good fit for the area, and we recommend that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council to change this from high-density residential to professional office located at 7540 South Redwood Road.
Thank you, Mr. Forsyth. Any questions for staff? No? We'll open it up for the public comment then. Please feel welcome to come forward at this time and comment on this item if you'd like. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment section. Commissioner Quinney?
Yeah, I'm just going to go ahead and make a motion on this. Based on the information, the findings set forth on this, in this staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council to amend the future land use map from high-density residential to professional office affecting two acres of property located at 7540 South Redwood Road.
Commissioner Green?
Second.
Do we have a motion by Commissioner Quinney and a second by Commissioner Green? Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, let's please vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero, which brings us to items number seven and eight this evening on the agenda, which will amalgamate into one presentation by the same applicant, which is, again, the city of West Jordan. And then we'll have one public comment section, but then we'll have separate motions to make sure that these different actions are looked at on their own merit. So we have Utah Power R2 property, 1105 West, 700 South, future land use map amendment for approximately one acre of property from high-density residential to parks and open land designation and rezone from R2 two-family residential zone to PRO parks, recreation, and open space zone. City of West Jordan is the applicant. Item number eight is 1095 West City Property on 1095 West, 7,000 South, future land use map amendment for approximately one acre of property from high-density residential to parks and open lands and rezone from R2 two-family residential zone to PRO parks, recreation, and open space zone, with the city of West Jordan also being the applicant. And Ms. Elgin has this this evening.
Good evening, commissioners. I need to apologize. The staff report for item number seven erroneously names the city of West Jordan as the property owner on that piece. That is actually owned by Utah Power and Light.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. So as you can see on the map, okay, this is for the northern parcel. Both parcels are just a portion of larger parcels. I'll show you that one. They're just small pieces of larger parcels. To the west, the land is designated high-density, and to the east, the land is designated parks and open land. The city's intention on this, both applications are just for a rezone and redesignation of a portion of each of the parcels to bring those portions into the same designation as the rest of the parcel and into a compatible zone district. The parcels are both currently vacant. They're minimally maintained native open space, and they abut an unlined open canal. We have received several phone calls from neighbors of the southern parcel that are concerned about possibly a trail going in there, but right now, the city has no intentions of developing that into parkland and maintaining it that way. This is purely a housekeeping item, items in front of you right now. The general plan committee saw this last week, and they recommended positive recommendation for you to make a positive recommendation to council and a four to zero vote with that. We, staff recommends that the planning commission also make a positive recommendation to city council to go forward with the rezone and redesignation of both parcels.
Thank you, Ms. Elgin. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll open this to the public. Please feel welcome to come forward if you'd like to speak on this item. Please state your name and address for the public record.
My name is Martin Lee Holfelt, and my address is 7079 South, 1115 West. This is directly behind my house, and I would be very uncomfortable having access if it was a parkway for people to be behind my house. And they'd be able to steal things, and it'd be uncomfortable, and I just don't want anything built back there.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Holfelt.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on this item?
Make sure that we, the email.
Oh, thank you. Yes. So should we, a question, Mr. Murray, should I read verbatim the email that we have received into the public record, or should we just keep that, just make mention of it and put it in the minutes?
Yeah, if you just make mention of who it was from, the date, and it could just be included in with the packet for the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. We're in receipt of an email from Letizia Wetzel, reaching out to mention that items seven and eight, she's concerned about some land use. And we'll keep that in the minutes for city council to see.
You could just sum up the general nature of what she's saying.
Okay. She's concerned about the trail. The canal company used the space for maintenance and laid down a road base, but they didn't have an easement for it. Apparently, it was a handshake agreement, she's saying. So the city doesn't allow them to use it anymore. It's become a walkway. Some crime associated with it, and she says a lot of crime associated with it, including about a year ago, a getaway car from a nearby shooting behind her house. It's about 20 feet from her house, and it feels very close. She has a camera on the trail. The police have used several times for catching criminals. She's concerned that the rezone would be the first step to opening up the trail even further, meaning removing the gate and inviting more foot traffic, which she's opposed to. She doesn't want to have a trail on both sides of her property very close to her house. She likes where she lives, and the only drawback to it is the trail behind her house. And she mentioned she couldn't be here tonight, but wanted to make sure that that was noted. So we appreciate her sharing that. Any other public comment this evening? We'll close the public comment section and bring it back to the commission. Interesting that both comments that we've had deal with safety. We appreciate Mr. Holfelt's comment and Ms. Wetzel's comment. Thoughts, commissioners? Recognizing that these are different items that we're separating out, fleshing out. Commissioner Luthy?
I think that one of the things that needs to be noted here is that nobody's trying to develop any of this. It's just a matter of changing it from one designation to another. And it's not any different that this goes to a parks and open land than it is anywhere along the rest of the corridor that has housing that butts up against it. So it's not like it would be out of the place or something's different here than it is any farther north or farther south from this area.
Commissioner Green?
I think what I want to make sure that everybody understands, because I mean, there's been a couple of people that have raised concern about this. Currently designated as R2, but it's, yeah, the R2 high-density, but there's no way that anybody could get there to develop it. And while there may be there on the one little street, but the property is so narrow that I think the practicality, and I'm not a real estate developer, so maybe the staff can nod their head north and south if they agree with me, but I don't think this land is ever going to be developable for any residential that it's zoned for right now. Am I correct in that assumption?
I was told a long time ago, never say never.
Well, that's, I mean, I have lived in some fairly interesting arrangements in Japan with houses that are two and three stories on small pieces of land, but I just don't see this as developable. And the common sense thing is to make it a park, or to include it, to include that future designation in the zoning as a park, that at the end of the day, we're not changing the use of the land. The land right now is still vacant. And I understand the neighborhood concern, and I think that that's one of those things that the city's pretty good about here in neighborhood concerns, and I think we need to make sure that the police department is aware of those neighborhood concerns with the possible improper use of the property back there. But we're not changing the use of the land right now. We're not. It's open space. It's going to stay open space. If there's a trail there, then maybe we'll be smart and put the trail in the right spot when we decide to put the trail there. Because of the way the trail ties down to the Jordan River now from that other area. So that's, I just wanted to make sure we're clear on what we're doing is really just cleaning up the map, and we're not changing the use of the property.
Thank you. Other comments or a motion? Commissioner Hatch?
I'd like to make a comment. Thank you, Chair. I live just to the north of this in a high-density residential area, so I'm learning. And the trail, you can see where the trail runs along the canal there, and it winds its way up, and it's a fantastic spot to walk. And I think just making this designation just makes sense. The fact that it was high-density residential doesn't even make sense to me. You can see the dotted line. That is the existing trail that I take pretty much every day with my dogs, and it's a beautiful area. So I'm happy to see this happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comment or a motion?
Sure, I'll do it because I'm...
Commissioner Green?
So this is for item number seven. I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation of the city council to approve the future land use amendment and rezone for the Utah Power and Light land located at 1105 West, 70 South.
Commissioner Hansen?
I second that.
A motion by Commissioner Green and a second by Commissioner Hansen. Is there any discussion this evening? Seeing none, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Commissioner England?
I'll make a motion for agenda item number eight. I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council to approve the future land use map amendment and rezone for 1095 West City Property located at 1095 West, 7,000 South. Do we need to amend that to be, is this Utah Power and Light property or is this city property? That was number seven, okay. So city property located at 1095 West, 7,000 South.
Thank you. Commissioner Luthy?
I will second that.
A motion by Commissioner England, a second by Commissioner Luthy. Any discussion to that motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously seven to zero, and I believe that covers all the business on seven and eight, correct? I don't think we missed anything there. And I'd just like to say thanks to city staff for all of their work on behalf of residents, and thank you for the residents coming out. Appreciate the involvement in the public process. Is there any announcement, since we have a lot of city staff here, anything that we need to be aware of, anything coming up?
The meeting in two weeks.
I won't be here.
Okay. Thank you. So the meeting, we do have a meeting in two weeks.
The first May.
Let's see.
Two weeks is on the 29th. Well, that's next month.
I think we're thinking May.
Yeah, that's next month.
Right. So we have, we have a planning commission meeting the first of May, the 15th of May, and then we have a joint planning commission city council meeting on the 29th, 6 o'clock. Same time, same bat time, same bat channel. Anything else?
So, Mr. Chair, regarding that joint workshop, are there any specific items that you would like to see on that meeting? We were already working with the council and staff to come up with an agenda. We'll send that out early May, but any thoughts? I mean, you don't have to answer right now, but if you do, please email Larry or myself, and we'll do our best. Obviously, we're going to follow the direction of the council, but if you have any thoughts, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate the invitation. Does anybody have anything that comes to mind right now? Anything that seems to be reoccurring? mind right now? Anything that seems to be reoccurring? Any problems in efficiency or communication? Anything in the code that we're having trouble with when we're deliberating items? Commissioner Quinney?
Yeah, this is my alchemy. Just wants to make sure we're going to be able to have a dialogue and not just, not just watch this next one like we did last time. Just, you know, does boring.
Thank you. And what we could do is during these next two weeks, please be brainstorming and thinking back to when we've been trying to vet these items on behalf of the city council so that we can give them a good recommendation. Is there anything that seems unclear in all of these criteria that we're trying to assess? Commissioner Luthy?
Two things. One, last time we had like a pre-show. Is that going to be the same this time?
Do you want Larry to sing and dance?
Discussion, no. We had a presentation by somebody talking about the twenty forty, twenty fifty discussion. Is there anything like that going to, I just was caught off guard by that, that I thought it was going to be more of a dialogue and not so much a presentation. Okay.
So, I believe there's not a pre-meeting at five thirty. It's just scheduled for six o'clock. Is that correct? Do we know where that will be? Is it probably the community room or?
And then my second question was about, we had talked a lot about the planned community zone and some discussions that had come up with the plan. I think that should be an item on there. We've had lots of conversations about that. And so, I think it would be nice to have more of a roundtable discussion about it.
Anything specific in the PC zone?
Now, you got to make me remember everything we've talked about. Mostly, it was that we were trying, we kept having to amend certain things and it didn't make sense to amend it. We should either decide that we want it there or we don't and leave it alone.
Is that there, you know, when we amended the PC zone for the discount tire, literally? Does a tire store really belong in a PC? And the discussion of what should belong in a PC and, you know, are there part, are there problems with the PC and mixed use and single-family housing versus other things that it requires now that don't quite make sense with the cap and grade? We were talking, you know, if you remember, a few months ago, we were talking about reworking that. But that kind of, with the elections and everything, it fell, it fell by the wayside putting the committee together. But it may be, some of those discussions may be beneficial, at least to put us in the right direction on the PC zone.
Which is why I'm going to try to be more frequent at these meetings because I wasn't here for that discussion. So.
Commissioner Quinney?
Yeah, thank you. One of the conversations we had in the first one, we had, it was the early part of last year, we talked a lot about what we wanted to see kind of in that southwest and that southwest corner with Chad and Nichols, I remember specifically talked a lot about putting a lot more of our retail space right along the southern border to see if we could pull someone that was South Jordan. I'm just curious if we, if we've, I don't remember seeing anything come up since that conversation where we're trying to actually implement that. I'm wondering if we can have that as part of the conversation again.
Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you. I'm really glad to see that we're advertising Jordan Landing on TV. Gives us a place in West Jordan. But I believe we need, really need to brand our city. We talked about it. I was on the council when we changed the sign. It didn't make a great deal of difference. They were pretty similar to what we had before. But if we, if we branded our city, because we're trying to get economic development and we're not going to get it, we're going to just continue to be what we are if we don't get the notoriety that we need. I happen to be in Las Vegas and they really got hit by the recession worse than we did. And I can't believe the branding they're doing down there now on TV and what they're bringing forth. And I think that we, we need to do something to bring attention to West Jordan instead of this is a cheap place to live. And that's kind of the reputation we've got because we don't have a lot of the bigger homes, things like that, which isn't something we necessarily need. But we do need to brand ourselves as a good place to live, a good place to play and a good place to work.
So, if we go that route, I would just, my advice to the commission and the council, if we do get into that discussion, is to keep it more land use centric. You know, branding's great and you can do it in a number of ways. You know, you mentioned signage and logos and stuff and that. Council can, can work with Tim Wells and stuff on that. But if we're talking about what Larry's been working on recently, you know, landscaping image along gateways and arterials and stuff, I think that would be appropriate.
I really do. I think Redwood Road, you know, that, that probably is one of the ugliest streets in our city, you know. But if, if we did make that very inviteable, I think that, that would really make a difference. You know, parts of Ninetieth, parts of Twenty, or, yeah, Ninetieth, that type of thing, Seventy-Eighth. Seventy-Eighth isn't, is pretty good. You've got the cemetery, parts of it are not. But I just think that if we looked at, at making our city look more inviting for people to bring their businesses here, to bring their families here to live, to play here. And I think that, that, you know, makes it very reasonable. I mean, I drive up to Park Station, the shop, because of what they offer, the restaurants, the, the different shopping areas, things like that. I mean, I do go to Jordan Landing and I like it there and use it, but it doesn't give you the variety. So, like they were talking about maybe commercial on the south end. You know, you, you go to the district, it's walkable. Jordan Landing is not walkable. And if you go to the district in South Jordan, it's very walkable. And so, something like that would, I think, be very inviting and to the people who live out west more so. So, just ideas like that.
Thank you. I don't want to take too much of everybody's time. But just to give you an update, at the last city council meeting, the council gave staff direction to bring back an item, a business item on May ninth to talk about the, the purpose of the general plan committee. Now, we've invited them to be part of our workshop at the end of May so they can hear firsthand the discussion from the commission and from the council as they, as they look at these land use map amendments. Part of that discussion coming up on the council meeting on the ninth is to clarify code changes that occurred last June regarding the, you know, how frequent we can review map amendments. You know, it's every quarter and that's spelled out really clearly. We just need to tighten a few things up. It'll be a good opportunity for us as staff to really have a good dialogue, hopefully with, with the council and, and help them understand that the general plan committee does play an important role in providing recommendations to this commission and to the, to the city council. In the past, the general plan committee has been an ad hoc committee. We've only used it really when we've had to really amend the, the general plan. This is a great way with the new system to keep their skills honed. We've, we've noticed when we convene or reconstitute the general plan committee, we're starting from scratch. And these, these are great citizens who love West Jordan and they want to do good, but they don't have a lot of background typically in land use. And so, it takes a while to train them. And we've had two meetings with this current general plan committee where I think Larry's indicated that, hey, the light bulb's coming on now. And as we move forward, we can use those skills to not only look at specific land use applications, but as the code currently states, look at larger chunks of the city. And, you know, one of the big things that, the hot items that, that may eventually get to the commission is the seven-hundred acres in the northwest corner of the city. The wood property is what we call it. And so, that's, that's really on the top of the, the land use list that we've got going on right now. So, I would encourage you to kind of maybe follow that, that dialogue at the next city council meeting, see how that discussion goes because it'll be a business item. It won't be a formal public hearing or, but that'll lay the foundation, the groundwork to, for further discussion when this workshop convenes later on in May. So.
Thank you. Thank you. And yes, it's exciting to see new, you know, landscape and, and street. Well, I guess it's just the upkeep and maintenance too, you know, tree replacements and keeping up with what we already have as well as, you know, adding better things so that we're not in the bedroom community where everybody commutes out of the city to go to work. So, thank you. Anything else to be aware of? Motion to adjourn? Any opposite? Okay. We stand adjourned till May. Thank you.